Cubs would be better, Mr. Russo. I'd say same thing. Cubs shirt, Matt box.
Yeah, I would like that, without the Cubs fan.
Mr. Paul, Cubs would be better.
They're playing today at the same time as the White Sox.
All right. Let's call it Tuesday, October 1st meeting of St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Order please stand for the pledge and remain standing for prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. We seek blessings on the tasks before us. We seek to serve our community wisely and well and represent all members of our community fairly with decisions that promote the common good. Continue to remind us that all we do is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you and the service of humanity. We ask thee things in your name. Amen.
Before we go any further, if we could, I'd like to ask for a brief moment of silence. Commissioner Combs' brother Joe, Combs passed away last week. If we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First order of business, opening reading of bids. First item from Infrastructure Planning and Growth, Edison Road at Birch Road intersection, four-way flesh installation or four-way conversion project. This is a much delayed, we still did not receive any bids on this, so I think we're just going to postpone this indefinitely. The feedback we've been getting is the groups who could perform this work, they're pretty full, so the price we would get would not be very advantageous. So I think we're going to just table this indefinitely until it gets brought back to us. Can I say we can do anything formally with that?
Do you want to table this item or you just want to re...
I mean, we can withdraw it too, just because once we advertise for our quotes again, we'll just bring it back on agenda if that's acceptable.
Yeah, so I don't think you're table...
And we've got three contractors that we've been discussing with, and again, it's just where they're at right now, and the material lead time is outside of 20 weeks anyway, that the prices they would submit to us today are not reasonable, and they would prefer that we look to probably do this as a spring project.
You're going to issue another RFP in spring?
Yes.
So I don't think you're table any new ones relative to this project.
And we did formally advertise, Mr. Kusobin already noted, we have received zero bids, or...
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Timothy Road Drainage Improvement Quotes.
Jessica Clark, offices in the 4th, 7th, 11th floor for Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. The first quote we have is Timothy Road Drainage Improvement Quotes. We received two quotes. Make sure I grab the right one here. The first one is from Walsh and Kelly in the amount of $183,500, and the second one is from JCI Bridge Group in the amount of $159,494.40. Were there any quotes submitted that were not read aloud? Seeing none, we'd recommend that the Board of Commissioners accept the opening of quotes, turn it over to us for review and recommendation actually at the end of the meeting today.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Second motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next, the Department of Commerce, DeLure Road Trail Construction.
Again, we received two quotes, the first being from McCullough-Schulten Construction in the amount of $123,559, and the second from Selge Construction in the amount of Were there any quotes submitted that were not read aloud? Seeing none, we'd ask again that the Board accept the opening of these quotes, and we will make a recommendation for the award at the end of this meeting. Just to note, as a reminder on this project, this is actually a project in coordination with Clay Township as they received a grant from the county for this, and part of the partnership was that we were helping them administer the project. The county was providing, I want to say up to about $62,000 is what they were awarded, plus then they provide the remaining costs of that project to build this trail.
Questions or comments? I think Madam Commissioner for commenting with the support of the Clay Township. Is there any? Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports and requests, first from the Board of Commissioners, first item is the accounts payable dockets. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. We're going to...
Is he here? Is our employee of the month here? Not yet. Oh. That's all we listen to.
So we're going to postpone the employee of the month for a few minutes. Moving on into the 2020 holiday schedule. And before us, the 14-day holiday schedule 2020. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the 2020 holiday schedule.
Second, motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to the Health Department. First item, request approval of Resolution R-10-C2019, health fee changes.
Nico Russ, St. Joe County Health Department.
Mark Usbeck, St. Joe County Health Department.
How's your office?
Ninth floor, County City Building.
Ninth floor, County City, yeah.
You're going to go first.
We're proposing to increase the fees for the Environmental Division. A lot of these fees haven't been increased since 2014, just through basic operational cost increases in salary, it's time to raise these fees. Most of them are going up $25, and then we also added a fee, a $5 fee for FOIA request, which would be $5 per parcel.
Any questions or comments?
And then mine is for the Nursing Division, and ours are for the vaccine costs. Our is for purchasing costs, including discounts, purchase for administration fee. A lot of our vaccine costs have went up, so ours will be increasing to meet the profit margin criteria due to when we go to order, our costs have went up there. And we've also are requesting to add additionally to vaccine presentations, shingles vaccine and the high dose flu vaccine.
May I ask, what does tattoo and body piercing have to do with health care?
We regulate massage parlors, tattoo and body piercing.
You regulate them?
Yeah, we inspect them, permit them, and...
Maybe you're doing that.
No. No.
Do you think you should expand? Don't get shot.
Like, really? Wow.
No, thank you.
You're expecting it. You're expecting that.
Yes.
And so you're charging, you're increasing that, when you don't expect it, you're increasing the fee.
Yes, the establishment and the practitioners all have to be permitted through us, and then we also inspect the establishment.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Resolution R-10-C-19, health fee changes.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, request approval to apply for the Indiana State Department of Health's Fetal Infant Mortality Review Program.
Robin Vida, Director of Health Outreach Promotion and Education, St. Joseph County Department of Health, offices here on the 8th and 9th floor in County City Building. This is our, this is a renewal of a grant we have received the last four years, and this is the third cycle. It funds our fetal infant mortality review coordinator, where we subsequently host case review teams and community action teams to ultimately lower the county's infant mortality rate.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Combs? I want to sort of thank your staff for giving us grants again. Because it's a renew, are those positions already in your budget?
They will be moving forward, since the State Department of Health has asked us this year, each year, the grant in the past has been two years of funding. This year, it is one year, or the proposed funding is one year of funding, so we've been working with our Board of Health to see how that position can be secured in a county line item.
And I think you're right, a year, one year, it's not on calendar here. So somebody's...
Correct. Yep.
So you have somebody working on accounts of work.
We do. Yep, and this, I'm sorry?
The motor here.
Yes.
Does anything sure mechanics are getting done?
Yep.
And then certainly extend, I think I can speak for the board of commissioners, in all the St. Joseph County things, St. Joseph Hospital and keeping health systems paying the match.
Exactly. Yep, and that's where if we do have, where we feel the most confident, is since we have had the program where we've been able to trend data for a minimum of three years thus far, we'll have strong partnership and support from both health systems to continue not only our coordinator's position, but potentially other positions in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Combs?
Yeah, you know, I want to make sure that we improve and decrease in fetal infant mortality rates. Do you have them yearly report on what the causes of the mortality, infant mortality rate changes have had?
Yep, we do, and I can, I'll gladly send, I'm surprised Sally would not have already. We do each year do an annual report on our trends, what initiatives we're working on in the coming year. Because our number of deaths in comparison to births is relatively low, our numbers kind of stayed somewhat static. However, I think as we continue to look at our data, we get to the fourth year, the fifth year, we'll finally be able to see our numbers begin to trend down. Yep. Yeah, I'll, as soon as I get back, I'll send it, our most current annual report to you.
And I'd like to know whether this is not due to the health.
For sure. Awesome.
And then I think back on that, if the opiate lawsuit, if there's more deaths because of opiate abuse, certainly won't be pertinent, so considering that's a requirement as well.
Okay, for sure. Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion for, to apply for the Indiana State Department of Health's Fetal Infant Mortality Review Grant.
Second motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Human Resources, request approval of open enrollment 2020 contract renewal with benefit focus.
Good morning. Kim Karkowitz, Director of Human Resources, St. Joseph County, offices on the 7th floor of this building. The Benefit Focus renewal will take us through, extend our contract through November 30th of 2020. This is the platform that we use to do our enrollment for our insurance benefits. With our open enrollment starting on October the 8th, we do need to have this contract sent over to them so we can move forward.
Questions or comments? Thank Kim for her staff for keeping up on that stuff.
Absolutely.
And prepare for open enrollment.
We are preparing for open enrollment, starting today is going to be our general meeting at 2 o'clock for employees here in this chambers.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the open enrollment, 2020 contract renewal.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of medical benefit plan amendments.
Good after, or morning. Troy Scott, R&amp;R Benefits, 1251 North Eddie Street in South Bend. We have Amendment Number 5 to the St. Joseph County Employee Medical Benefit Plan. You'll have three copies of it. It affects the active plan, the retiree plan, and the supplement plan. It's not really a material change, it's just cleaning up the verbiage on the eligible class. We've had a couple of questions, and we've always handled it on a one-off, and we thought it would just be better to clean up the language as it impacts elected officials and appointed county attorneys. Normally, the eligible class is required to work 30 hours per week on a regular basis. We are adding the language for elected officials and appointed county attorneys, that these employees do not have a minimum hourly requirement. We were going to change that to countless and tireless hours put in, but we went with not having a minimum requirement, so that is how that impacts the active. The retirees, just a subtle change here for the eligible class and the supplement class, we are removing the last sentence of the eligible class of the last day worked, for the same reason with elected officials and appointed county attorneys, since they don't have an actual schedule and would not have a last day work, so we're just removing that to clean it up. Are there any questions?
Any other questions or comments? I certainly think, Troy, you've been here for all your hard work, great company, you put county state money. Kim, I just, but something's ringing a bell, that now there's this 30-hour rule that you're being expanded upon. I thought in the past we had some exceptions for somebody from Mars, and that for permanent part-time employees, they're getting some kind of benefit, like even though they're working weekends, they're working 28 hours shifts a week, but they might have been doing it for 20 years. Now, just vacation time, I know, or...
Right, that was regarding the benefit time, not the actual medical benefit. When we're dealing with this particular amendment, it's for those positions that don't have the traditional work hours to that, and that would be that elected official and appointed county attorneys, because it is not a traditional Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30 with that. With other employees, we do have time cards and really work shifts that we can actually show the actual work. These are ones that are off of that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Now, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Medical Benefit Plan Amendment Number 5.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next, voter registration, request approval of polling location.
Arielle Brandy, Democratic Board Member for voter registration, offices here on the 4th floor.
Kim Ruskovich, Republican Board Member, also here in voter registration on the 4th floor.
So we have proposed that there are two polling locations, two precincts that will have new polling locations for the upcoming 2019 general election. Those locations were the First Christian Church, which will now be the Mishawaka FOP Number 91, we will use door N. The St. Joseph County Young Men's Society is no longer going to be used, we will use the South Bend Fire Station Number 4. Per Indiana code, we will be sending out the postcards like we usually do to the voters, alerting them of the polling location changes.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the chief polling location.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, moving on to the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, there are a bid request, S-6051819, Redwood Road over Branch Potato Creek Structure Replacement.
Good morning. Again, Jessica Clark, County Engineer with offices on the 4th, 7th, 11th floor for Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. We have a bid request for Redwood Road over Branch Potato Creek Structure Replacement Project. We requested to be advertised this Friday, October 4th, October 11th, with a bid opening on October 22nd.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve that.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next, bid request, S-5751819, Crumpstone Trail, Little West House, to get structure replacement.
Likewise, again, this is the bid request to have this project advertised for a bid letting, same dates, advertised October 4th, October 11th, with a bid opening on October 22nd, please.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this bid request.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next, item request approval of indoc contract, R-37480, McKinley Highway from Ash Road to Corvus through intersection improvements with traffic signal change orders Number 13 and 16.
These change orders result in overall reduction to the contract. The original contract amount was $5,662,028.53. The revised contract amount is $5,575,993.66. Change Order 16 is just the balancing change order that balances out all the contract items, and the change order 13 is actually not a monetary change order, it is a time extension change order for utility conflicts encountered during the project, and we recommend your approval.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Thomas? Thank you. Certainly, change order 16 is welcome, you see, you know, almost $90,000. Change Order 13, is there no penalty for that, delays?
With respect to this particular delay, it did not affect the overall progress of the contract. There's a 22-day extension we are requesting, it was something that we in the field saw that was necessary to go ahead and grant. The contractor actually did file a monetary claim against the utility for their actual monetary costs based on the delay, but for our contract, it's merely just a time extension.
But would there be a delay, a penalty that we could apply? If they're signing money...
It would be a penalty to the prime contractor, not the utility company.
But they're hoping to give me a right D and D.
They filed suit for this claim, yes.
That's interesting. We don't have a penalty itself, if they're going to make money off of it. Did our...
Well, typically, what it would be is the county would be responsible to pay 100% of the cost, and then the county would have to claim the suit. Based on how this transpired, we worked with the contractor to where they're seeking their own damages because it was significant, and it wasn't something that we wanted the county to have to expend and then try to recover.
Did the citizens not have use of that intersection or road for a period of time because of delay?
Their, the actual closure was an anticipated closure, it didn't extend that part of it, it is more just extending the amount of workdays they needed to complete all the work.
And would you call it laziness, or I forgot?
On this particular, the vault was an unknown condition, the actual size of the vault, and the amount of work that was necessary to do the work was such that AT&amp;T wasn't able to schedule it in the timeframe of our project. Should they have known they had a vault there, probably, but it was unknown to them as well, and then they didn't, they weren't able to schedule their crews to meet the time schedule of the contractor.
Thank you. And then this last one, the fourth paragraph, you've got twice completion date, years 2018.
Yes.
Are those correct?
Those are correct.
Okay.
Yes. This has been a long project trying to final out due to one of the utility claims and some of the other outstanding claims.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the change orders Number 13 and 16 for the indoc contract, R-37480, on McKinley Highway.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval, bid award, S-3031619, Bendix Road over Toll Road Rehabilitation.
We opened bids for the Bendix Road Rehabilitation or Bendix Bridge Rehabilitation Project on Tuesday, September 24th. We received three bids from Reith Riley, JCI, and Northern Indiana Construction. Based on review of the bids, we recommend the Board award the project to Reith Riley in the contract amount of $1,774,542.75. This project is funded through the Major Cumberbridge Fund.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the bid award to Reith Riley Construction.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, request approval of professional services proposal, Pictometry International Corp., Chain Finder Service.
Good afternoon, or good morning. Bill Shalillo, Economic Development with Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the 11th, 7th, and the 4th floor. The professional service proposal before you today for Pictometry and International Incorporated relates to a proposal that was brought to you on August 20th. On August 20th, you approved this contract, but the proposal that was, or the contract that was submitted was actually an in-progress version versus the final version, which is attached to this document. What I'm asking for your approval today of is the actual corrected version of that document. If there's any questions, there's no material changes, it's just actually the corrected version that has all the right terms and conditions, so the price is still the same, and it's still a good project for us to move forward with.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the corrected version.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of McKinley Avenue Waterline Evaluation and Valuation.
So item F and item G are related to the same project. As part of a project we're working on in northeastern St. Joseph County, we're working with Penn Township, PHM Schools, and a variety of other partners to do a bunch of pre-development work for a potential development project at the northwest corner of McKinley and Bittersweet. Specifically here today are two sets of appraisals to appraise properties to extend a waterline that exists between Bittersweet and a point at Evergreen Drive. We have to get a number of appraisals, we have to get eight appraisals. The total price for the appraisals would be $2,690 per appraisal for a not-to-exceed amount of $21,520. Two vendors were selected for this, Appraisal and Valuation Professionals and Dave Wazak Appraisals. Both of these are appraisers that do a lot of easement appraisal work for city of Mishawaka and have done work for the county. We'd ask for your approval of both of those, both, again, both proposals in the amount of $21,520. Any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Are there any factoring questions? Thank you. Mr. Shalillo, Penn, Harris Madison?
So PHM Schools owns a piece of the property that would be affected by this project.
And I think, did you mention some other government agencies?
Penn Township would be one of the other agencies.
Are they wanting to reimburse us for these expenses?
So this is actually an expense that we will bear as part of the joint project that we're all working on together. We will, we will take this piece of the project on. We need, if we looked to do an industrial park at the site, we would need water to the site, so this would be a piece of the work we would do anyway.
And it's Mishawaka and clean water, right?
It is fabulous, clean water in Mishawaka, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see Mishawaka pay their own water, their own expenses.
Well, I believe that they're going to be part of, they're going to cover cost or be part of the cost of extending the waterline, so this is part of the work we're doing to get them to build the waterline.
Well, these are, this would be over $42,000.
Correct.
I'd rather see Mishawaka pay for it. Thank you.
Yep.
Castle, are we okay to ask one of these, or will you be asking the Penn?
Yeah, and I was asking two questions.
Yeah, I want to know. We'll just speak to that. So no more questions or comments?
I just have a comment, or question, I mean, the appraisal, it's going to be just, that's on, that's not in Mishawaka Road, so is it?
No, it's actually in unincorporated area of St. Joseph County, yes.
Those are the county roads that we need to appraise to make sure, because we're going to have to put the water in on that, so...
Correct.
That's why we have to do that, right?
Right.
But they're going to put sewer lines in, correct?
There's already sewer lines in McKinley. This is, this is a water line issue connecting point A and point B.
Yeah, we're just seeing where we can put the, put in a mass block of property, and make sure we can do that.
Right. We can't put it in the roadway, we actually have to put it off roadway, off on private property.
Right. Okay.
There are no more questions or comments? Is there a...
Motion to approve from McKinley Avenue Waterline Easement Project, Number, or Letter F and G.
Second, the motion, the second holds a favor. Please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Aye. Motion passes. Two to one. Next, request approval of professional service agreement with the Antero Group, South Bend International Airport, Multimodal Freight Management Plan Addendum Number 1, SBN Freight and Logistics Strategy Implementation.
Yes, so over the last year or so, we've been working with the Antero Group and DLZ and a variety of other partners to look at the development opportunities related to industrial freight, logistics, manufacturing in the southwest quadrant of the airport. As we get closer to finishing up that master plan, we need to amend the scope of the work of the Antero Group so that we can work to finalize this master plan process. We've got a couple of tenant, or a couple of prospects that are looking at the site, and so we have, we have chosen to use some of the funding to study work with those tenants, as well as doing additional work on rail design into the park, coordinating that work with DLZ and AECom and some other business partners there. Addendum 1 would be a contract proposal, expands some $88,570. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Mr. Shaw, was your original contract going to share with us?
What is the original amount of that? Well, it's funny that you might ask, because I was actually going to pass this to the next one, but we've put together a master budget of all the contracts.
I knew you were very kind to do that, and I requested, but I didn't see it, I figured I'd ask you.
Yeah, I was going to put it back in.
Thank you, sir.
But this is going to be extending the scope of services by the company, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So this is, the original contract was what, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars?
No, it would be three hundred and fifty thousand. It would be in that category, marked Southend Freight, SBN Freight and Logistics Park.
Okay, all right. Wow, so Antero's made one point two million on this so far.
Well, they've actually made that on, it's, it's work there and the work it's doing out in the IEC, yes.
I'll save everybody's time. Everybody knows I'm not a fan of eating projects, so.
Yep, that's fine.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm looking to approve the Antero Group International Airport Addendum Number One.
Second. Here's a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. No, I wouldn't be opposed. Fastest two to one.
I was going to say, I was getting confused up here. What's going on? It's Freaky Friday.
Next, we have the request approval of CRISI Grants, CSNS and SBSJ Secret Development Commission Partnership and Leading.
So I'll pass it up first.
Thank you.
So before you today is a proposal that has two parts. The first part is the request to file a grant with the Chicago South Shore and South Bend Railroad to file a CRISI grant. CRISI stands for Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements. This grant is administered through the Federal Railroad Administration, the FRA, which is a division of the Department of Transportation. This CRISI grant that we're applying for, we're seeking four point five million dollars to do two projects. The first project is a replacement to the bridge in New Carlyle over US twenty. The bridge is, is old. It doesn't carry a weight capacity to meet current weight needs for industrial development. Specifically, we need the bridge to have a capacity of two hundred and eighty-six tonne, and right now it has less than that. So the first piece would be a complete replacement to the bridge. There are some opportunities with that, that it will allow for a wider span underneath the bridge. This opens up the ability to have pedestrian access under the bridge, something that doesn't presently exist. Plus, it will be a bridge that will be much more substantial and be a nice welcoming piece into the town. The second piece is to pay for industrial trackage into land already owned by Chicago South Shore, near the intersection of Smylax and US twenty. This will open up rail development opportunities for Chicago South Shore. So these two grants, or these two pieces together, again, a four point five million dollar grant request, what we're being asked for is to partner with Chicago South Shore at an eight hundred thousand dollar level, so we would put in eight hundred thousand, they would put in eight hundred thousand. We have some other business partners that are also putting in funding that will raise our percentage match to a higher level. So that would be the first part of this, is the request to be able to file the grant. The Redevelopment Commission has already approved that request. The second piece of this is Bergman, which is a consulting firm that does these CRISI grants, does a lot of other work, a lot of rail-related work, is putting together the grant application with our staff and coordinating the, the development of the grant. The proposal is to split the cost of that grant. The grant preparation work is estimated to be twenty thousand dollars. So we would split that work fifty-fifty with Chicago South Shore. So our percent would be, our fund end would be ten thousand dollars. So we'd ask for your approval to file for the grant and add an amount of eight hundred thousand by the county, as well as to pay the ten thousand dollars to cover costs, or up to ten thousand dollars to cover costs for the grant preparation filing. The grant would be due October eighteenth. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Mr. Shaw, when I first saw this letter from Chicago South Shore and South Bend Railroad, I didn't recognize the name, and I was surprised it didn't say Nick D. And then someone said to me, well, I think Nick D is the umbrella of the organization, and one end is passenger, and that this Chicago South Shore is free. Is that?
No, that's, that's absolutely false. There's actually two separate companies. Nick D is the passenger service. It's the silver trains, if you will. And then Chicago South Shore and South Bend is actually owned by Anacostia Railroad. Anacostia Railroad owns this, as well as several other short lines. Chicago South Shore and South Bend has rights to travel on the Nick D-owned tracks, and so they are actually a tenant, if you will, of Nick D on the tracks. At one point in time, they used to all be one company. Over the years, they've been split apart and separated.
Thank you for that very good explanation. So Nick D owns the tracks of the stations.
That's correct.
Federal levy thirty-five percent is, is, was that the thing that was announced in the paper last week? It was last Monday's Tribune, page eight three, was a story out of Munster, that the Port Lake and Porter County have been designated as a federal economic development zone for the Chicago Greatland, Greater Chicagoland area. Is that maybe part of that?
No, this is absolutely a completely separate thing. What they, what they have received is federal ED designation, which allows them to apply for grants at a different level, or applies for funding and things like that.
Did you see that article?
I did.
And I thought it was interesting that they didn't include Texas County in the Chicago Greatland Economic Area.
Well, we aren't, we aren't part of the RDA, which received that designation, so we wouldn't be eligible to be part of that designation.
Will these funds be paid out of the New Carlyle tip?
They're proposed to be, that's correct.
Originally, I wasn't a big fan of this, you know, but I thought about it. I liked the map you gave me this morning. I see that the bridge is going to restore, a bridge that needs some modernization and passenger safety. I do have concerns, grave concerns, that there'd be, while it's under construction, I don't know if it's going to be three months, three years, but, you know, it can really damage the town if that, if that crossing is closed for extended periods of time.
My, my understanding, the construction period is, is, correct me if I'm wrong.
One, two weeks.
One to two weeks.
That's good, yeah.
Because it's built off alignments and, and built, and then the new bridge is put in place.
I think you might recall earlier this spring, I think it was Indot did a project there, and they had the bridge supposed to close like three months.
It was quite a while, yes.
We're struggling, citizens are struggling. Children couldn't visit their grandmas, you know, get to school, people couldn't work. So I'm glad to hear that. So with the understanding that it's coming out of tip, I will support it.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this CRISI grant?
Second. Here's a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes two to one. Also note, yesterday's Nick D board meeting, Todd was there, Commissioner McGinnis from Indot was at the meeting as well, so we had discussions there, so they will be providing a lot of support.
Fantastic.
And it's to be from a South Shore perspective. It's a very exciting project, long overdue, so thank you for helping bring this to fruition. All right. Next up, request approval of professional service proposal, the Antero Group Addendum Number Two, IEC Implementation Proposal.
So as we look to release a draft version of the IEC master plan, the comp plan, and several other documents here in the, in the coming weeks, we are at a point where we're, we're trying to get all these pieces put together, but again, looking at scopes and looking at budgets, working at a point where we need to finalize some additional funds into the Antero Group's budget line so that we can complete the work. Antero Group has served not only as our consultant, our master consultant, but also is serving to put together the plan and, and put together the, the versions that will be rolled out as part of the draft rollout here in the next couple of weeks. Additionally, they've served as a, a project manager relative to some development projects that are, that are working through the system. So this amount is, is to cover all those expenses, and those expenses that will come over the next couple of months as we finalize the draft reports that will be released here in the next couple of weeks. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Is there any question? Is there a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve the professional proposal for Antero Group Addendum Number Two.
Second. Here's a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Aye. Motion passes two to one. And I will just make, make a brief comment. We are spending a lot of money in this geographical area. Part of the reason we are is because we do not want to see a duplicate of what's happened from a residential standpoint in the Granger area, with lack of proper planning from a sewer and water standpoint, and also what we've seen from the city of South Bend in the Amerplex area, where we, where there's not been the foresight from an infrastructure standpoint. So we are trying to cram twenty years' worth of work that could or should have been done into a smaller time because we want to make sure, in the event development happens, it's done responsibly, and it's done in a way that we can sustain it. So I appreciate the work you're doing, and it's painful work right now, I understand, but it's critical to make sure that if development happens, it does so responsibly. So thank you for your efforts. All right. Last up, request approval of Generations To Come Media Project Big Idea Company Proposal.
So as part of the rollout for the IEC master plan draft, and ultimately the final versions of the documentation, we wanted to get some additional assistance in, in putting together a, a public presentation package that really addressed all the issues that we've heard over the last couple of years, whether it's meetings here, or meetings at the Redevelopment Commission, or at the council, just trying to get the, the public input and, and the public perspective wrapped into this. The Big Idea Company, a, a local company that does a lot of media relations and, and referendum work, will be able to assist us as we craft the message and as we craft the, the outreach opportunities. We want to make sure that we're as absolutely inclusive, as absolutely transparent as we go through the draft and, and master plan adoption process. So we, we believe that Big Idea will be able to help us do that and help us get the word out and, and do all the things that are necessary. This proposal has a very deliberate scope of work. Total is a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-two thousand dollars. There was an addendum Friday, or an addition Friday, where we actually put the contract in with this, this packet when we originally filed it. It didn't have the contract in with it, so the contract has been added. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Earlier on IMH, when Antero Group, their contracting, they included that they would try to set up and learn about trade shows in the years 2019 and the years 2020. Would this Big Idea Company, would they be, maybe hired to go to these trade shows in 2019 and 2020?
So they would actually help us put together the materials, the messaging, the other documentation, for websites related to going to trade shows, or materials that would go to trade shows, either with us, with the South Bend Elkar Partnership, with the Chamber, other agencies going to trade shows.
Promote the industrial part, but it's not built yet.
Correct. Well, I, I would say it is built. We have two thousand acres of industrial development already out there, so.
I still think it's a lot of money, and I'm not supporting any of this.
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
I was also excited about getting the meeting involved to help to get the information out for the community and the county. So I'm glad we're moving forward, thanks so much.
Did you see it was sixty thousand dollars to NPR?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I would also note, that's just phase one, correct?
That's correct. All we're approving is phase one today.
Eight hundred?
Right, and we, we are not authorizing phase two. We're, we're getting through phase one to determine what our next step will be.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Nobody Frank PR?
Hey, National Public Radio.
Right.
And no more questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this media project idea?
Second. Here's a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Aye. Motion passes two to one. Ms. Clark, you've got a couple of energy like this.
Yes, based on the quotes that we opened this morning, I would recommend for the Timothy Road culvert installation drainage improvement that we award the project to JCI Bridge Group in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-nine, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents. We've got the, the funds set aside to get this work done, and then they will work in cooperation with our asphalt maintenance package to finalize the paving of that stretch of road as well.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Thomas?
I, I think that, and you see, whatever JCI does work for us, I don't give a lot of phone calls or complaints, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there more questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the JCI award that you did.
Second. Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. I assume that includes awarding the project to them as well.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Do you have one other?
Yes, for the lower road trail construction project, we would further recommend that we award this contract to Selge Construction in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Questions or comments? Is there?
What was the name of the company?
Selge Construction.
How do you spell that?
S E L G E, out of Niles, Michigan.
Okay, anyone want to read that?
Please.
Contact room? Okay. Move forward, a motion to approve that, move forward with the south construction.
Second. Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe, or so he may, he may table this until next, or until next, in two weeks, or maybe in two weeks.
Is that here? Oh, sorry.
So moving on to old business, seeing none, public comments? Other than public comments, please state your name and address for director.
Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlyle. I'm so glad I was able to be here this morning. You've answered a number of my, my friends' concerns regarding the IEC. Commissioner Castilni, thank you for the explanation on the importance of pre-planning. The, it still doesn't make us real happy, but I, and we understand why this is going on, and, and you've made it perfectly clear that you're being very careful, and that Bill is being very careful with what's going on here. The transparency is, is refreshing. Months ago, Jessica Clark assured me at a Redevelopment Commission meeting that the Timothy Road project was on this year's agenda, and it was going to get done. And as I see the hole continue to get larger there, and helping one elderly lady out of the marsh after she'd been directed into there by an oncoming truck, I was a little concerned. And then to hear, hear the bid actually awarded here at this meeting was, felt good. And thank you, Jessica, for following through on that, and just say Jessica for president. Thank you.
I'll also note, on Jess's behalf, that the IED was one of the reasons why it was delayed as long as it had been as well. So that was, I appreciate her staying on top of this and getting it moved forward as quickly as possible. Any other public comments? Seeing none, a motion to recess in order.
Just for your information, we do have a trustee hearing, so we'll reconsider the here, according to Council, trustee case number five, seven, nine, zero. Also, after we recess, Mr. Phil, the Senate's here, they've got some documents, executive deals related to the St. Mary's closing of their bond, which we approve, so we'll be able to start with the same.
So the action to simply recess, is to recess really mean what?
They would be to recess, we would be to.
After Mr. President.
Yeah, for trustee case five, seven, nine, oh.
Does that motion exist?
Don't move.
Second, a lower in favor? Aye, opposed, tough luck. We are momentarily.
Have a period of time for public comments. Then start taking it. Mission very fine, mission for council, probably in November, maybe September. But again, it's trying to match up all these timelines and dates. So like I said, we're hoping that we have a calendar.
That mic's stuck out, man.
As far as the enterprise, do you anticipate their financial changeover during this?
I do not. These are both, I would anticipate that these are the final. So we get two or three prospects, I need their services. Their scope of work. In both cases, they're all owners who is the, the seller. And then as long as, probably have to wait for.
I could be tired of that.
What's the stage in the city, some of the, the funding side, whether to bring that back three kilos to? So I think it's, we want to, we kind of want to work it through. So we get the adoption of the data. So he's, he respects that if we have a project, they may help us with the messaging. But then we've got to make a decision. If those prospects come, we'll accelerate the IEC and ESPN project to around one. Or we may not need additional media sources. Or we may need additional resources. They put that scope in there.
So when the building is done?
But I don't know. Maybe you just amended.
Exactly. I was with Mary and I'm. Yeah, it's a game bus that they're avoiding. Because she had. So maybe I see how fast I can do this.
Yeah, so we're.
We're. Yeah, yeah.
That'll drive off of that. Yeah, I'll be that you're shit. Wanted to give you some more topics. I just wanted to let you know that. So I know, I know that's a topic.
Second is every reason we hear about. Is it a seven, three, or a six?
And that's.
Let's carry that.
I'm looking at this one. Spencer Page for Trump and I look at it for denture. Oh, it's indenture.
What is it?
It's indenture, but I'm looking at it as a denture.
Oh, denture.
Denture, do we type of?
No, no, I'm like, oh, it's a denture? Oh, no, it's indenture.
I just thought the dentures.
Right.
Well, he's certainly not square. But he got a pole, huh?
Yes.
He wanted to.
It's always paper. Like.
Type for your beer.
He's giving you a whole of course.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do you talk to St. Mary's people a lot? You know Bob and Gosick?
No.
He's like the head priest or something? Calabaw.
Oh, yeah, so he was. Is he, he's in the world.
I wonder if he was president or something. Wasn't a paper. He almost died in St. Gasmans. At St. Louis. He fell like fifty feet. And then his head was being held by a thing of pins. It was a bear, but he survived. Well, if he knew it wasn't.
I don't know that at all.
Yeah, it's gonna, if you could see him, I'd say tell him Father Nemo's is coming next week. With old pal. For a special. Neil. Yes? I'm gonna build a tunnel from your building to our building. That'd be nice.
Well, the Rockford case is, is, they know about that. Or is it that, or is it very long? Actually, about twenty-two seasons.
I'd imagine that.
And remotely is going to be out of power to the trade. It's a few times. So we'll see how many employees actually.
My people, you probably repaid a free one at least.
I actually do know it. Because I promised that. But you know how you get in there? It's lit.
Ah, I know.
That's how they build the garage.
It saves a lot of rat space. Probably get another five cars.
We know I recessed. It's not only is it expensive.
In the winter time, if it rains, they're gonna enjoy it. We're just having a company invite you a hovercraft or a helicopter. You got a helicopter landing on top? I remember a bunch I made many years ago, going to the seventh floor, Allen. I put the folders in front of each chair and then we would just go take the chairs.
Yeah. We've done it lots of ways.
Yeah, that's what I remember doing at the fort.
That sixty million, was it sixty million dollars? But it didn't get it right.
This one?
Yeah. Yeah. Take your time to get it right. That's your, that's your. Take care. Orange juice.
Yeah. I live in a, I invested a thousand over there. I didn't see it.
Yeah, I didn't see.
Take care, Phil. All right, so council, we.
We're going to reconvene for appeal hearing zero zero five seven nine for Portage Township Trustee. Thank you guys for your patience this morning. Go ahead and call me here in the center and I'll say some comments in the middle.
All right. And to reconvene, October first, maybe St. George County Board of Cationers. Allison?
Thank you. So we're here on the hearing for the appeal of the denial of assistance by Mr. Amir Coley. Mr. Coley, you're here?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Coleman, we're seated, you're here. Who's with you this morning?
This, uh, would be Eric Nebraska, I'm a caseworker, senior caseworker, and it's guys, a caseworker.
Do you have a microphone down there?
I might think the mic is probably speaking loud enough. Everybody that's going to testify or say anything this morning, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm or swear that the testimony you're going to give this morning is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So how this starts, sir, this is an informal hearing. This is not a court proceeding. There are no formal rules of evidence or anything like that. So generally speaking, we'll hear from you first, Mr. Coley. I assume why you believe that the denial of your petition for assistance was violative of Indiana law and the regulations, et cetera, by the township. Mr. Coley, we do appreciate that the commissioners have received the memo dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, regarding some history regarding this file. So that's much appreciated that you get this to us on an ongoing basis as we deal with the Portage Township appeals. So first here from Mr. Coley. Why do you believe that your denial of assistance was violative of Indiana law, sir?
Uh, it's not necessarily that I feel like it was violating the law for them denying my, me rights to get help or anything like that. It's just that I feel like they were assessing my situation a little different. For the most part, what they were denying me for was based off of an income base. And they were saying that I make too much money. I was, they're trying to say that I had enough income to cover my expenses and that they would deny me help. But I was trying to explain to them that my situation changes from month to month. What I make one month, I might not make the next month due to the type of business that I'm in, I'm all into, which is renting property, real estate rental property for the most part. And I was trying to show them that the tenants that I had last time when I was applying for assistance, not the same people that I've been dealing with at the time now. So the bill that I was trying to get help with, I was denied. And I felt like they didn't properly assess my situation before denying me. That was it.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to tell the commissioner relative to this matter?
Do I?
Is there anything else you want to say?
Well, I mean, for the most part, they've been helpful for the most part in my situation. I've had to come to them many different times and get help. I appreciate it. I'm not saying I don't appreciate what they do as far as helping. This was just one time where I really needed help on the bill. So that was the only thing I really need to say. Just really need you, just really need your help right this time, that's all.
Mr. Coleman will be speaking on behalf of your office.
Thank you. I will speak on behalf of the office and I may defer or ask Ms. Nebraska or Ms. Skoski to also offer comments. Two criteria that we cited that made Mr. Coley ineligible for assistance at the time of his application was that he was specifically over income. And Mr. Coley is right in point, correct in pointing out that we have helped him in the past and his situation has varied. And our, the assessment of his situation is done on a monthly basis. And in this particular month, he was over income and he had countable assets that prevented us from being able to provide him with assistance. That is the long and the short of the case. So I would offer that much to you. As specifically the reason.
Over income, you mean has income exceeded what you would have as your written policy relative to what an individual could have for a month to month.
Yeah, that's correct. And I should also mention that I've done my best to outline those details in my cover letter to the commissioners with regard to the, and then reference our standards in the office. And we've, well, we've been through this, the process with Mr. Coley on more than a few occasions to make sure that he was aware of what, not only what our standards are, but what the state statute spells out as well. And given him a copy of the standards. I can appreciate a level of frustration on his part that sometimes that he is eligible for assistance and other times he's not. However, that, those are the standards that we are held to. So those are the standards that we enforce.
And I think the commissioner can take notice that in a very recent appeal hearing, we fed the Portage Township Trustee. We reviewed their standards. They were modified recently in two thousand and nineteen.
Correct, actually, a few times in two thousand.
Look at and evaluate on an ongoing basis.
Are your standards stricter than the state standards or state statute?
Can I say in some ways, yes. In some ways, they are. In other ways, they are at the same level as the states. And of course, where there are, where the standards don't specifically speak to, our standards don't specifically speak to a situation that may arise, we default to the state's guidelines on the standards.
So from an income qualification standpoint, is it, is your standard stricter than the state or?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. No, no, it is the.
It is the state standard.
Yeah, it is.
So it's not, it's not even a, an issue of you.
It is not higher than the state standard.
Not the rule, but this is what you are bound by the state.
Yeah.
And it's a monthly thing that you go through, right?
Well, the.
It's that every.
Right, the assess, Mr. Coley would be welcome to visit our office during the month of October and apply again. And if we find that he is not over income or that he does not have countable assets. And when we refer to countable assets, at the time of his application in his most recent bank statement, which was four days prior to his appearance at our office, showed that he had fourteen hundred forty-eight dollars in the bank. And with those resources available to him, then we were left no choice but to say that he had, he or anyone in that position had to use their own resources before they called upon us to assist them unless there were extraordinary circumstances. And we didn't see any extraordinary circumstances in Mr. Coley's situation. The, I want to point out something else for future reference. There is a unique aspect to Mr. Coley's case in that he does have a tenant in the building that he also resides. And in this instant, in this, in this case, he said, he reported that he was a household of one. And as a household of one, then if he, if there are utilities that are shared with someone who is not in his household, that would make him immediately ineligible for any benefits because it would be someone who is not in his household who would also be receiving the benefit of, say, a utility bill. If they, if utilities are shared, if they are not separated for the, for the two tenants. And to the best of our knowledge, there is no separation of the utilities for the building that Mr. Coley resides in and that he has a tenant in, in the upstairs portion of his building. So I just want to mention that for your benefit, so you're aware of that in the future. So in the past, Mr. Coley has come to us and identified other members of his household and we've been able to verify income on them. In one case, he did not verify income on an additional member of his household and that was in May and he was denied at that time assistance because we didn't have the information that we could process to make a determination as to whether he was eligible or not. But we have assisted him on seven different occasions during the year two thousand and nineteen.
I generally have a lot to say and I apologize if I talk too much. But I know, I know Mr. Coleman, we've worked with him before and he seems like a very kind person. You said some nice things about him and his staff earlier. But in your writing, you said that you felt Mr. Coleman and his staff had personally, something against you personally. Did you not mean that? Or there was just a.
Me and him, a few times going on down there, it seemed like we've had a few, we want to say clashes or whatever, getting into a few minor little altercations of me getting help as many times where I've, you know, I felt like I wasn't getting. There's been times where I've, you know, I felt like, uh, I wasn't getting, uh, the proper service or, you know, wherever you want.
But you mean, I always know what you want. But I'm sure they're, they're always kind and respectful to you, even if the answer is denial. And then I'm sure they're always kind and respectful, aren't they?
I mean, everybody's not the same every time, no. I'm not, I don't come up there with the same attitude every time, so, uh, I understand why he might be sometimes that way towards me, I'm, you know.
And you, you understand the rule about income level?
Uh, that wasn't explained to me in specific detail when, uh, you know, when it wasn't, I haven't seen it in black and white. What is the specific rule about detail level? I mean.
If you're single, it's one thousand twelve dollars?
Yeah. Okay, and this is what I was trying to say to him. Okay, this is what I was trying to show them when I, when they say I was overqualified, they, uh, I showed them a bank statement that, uh.
And the bank statement showed the money, that you had more money than you were.
Yep, this is what I was trying to explain. This is what was deposited into the account. First month's rent plus seven fifty for a security deposit. A security deposit is not counted as an income. That's something that has to.
Are you saying the money you received from your tenant?
This was from the, when they first moved in.
Your tenant paid.
My tenant. Well, they didn't pay. It was from DCS, the people who she was moving and trying to get her kids.
Someone was paying your tenant's rent.
The DCS, yes. This is why I brought this up here. Yeah, uh, they were helping her getting to, get into a place so she can have a place to stay where she can continue. They're just initially helping her to get into.
So you're saying it's not income, it was revenue to your business?
That's not what I'm saying, if you listen to what I'm saying. I s, if you read this piece of paper, when the tenant initially moved into the place, which was nine, four, nineteen, uh, well, was just basically this month or the month of, uh, was it? Might've been. Yeah, it was September where she moved in. They only gave a, uh, they paid her first month's rent to move in and they paid her security deposit. Usually the security deposit is fully refundable to the, to the tenant. It's not counted as an income. Only, only thing that you can really count as an income is the, uh, the rent. You get what I'm saying? The rent is something that I can spend. The security deposit just is, is, is there just in case they don't pay rent or they damage something that they.
Sir, I see a difference in the word between revenue and income, cause I'm an accountant. I understand that also the term deposit, you know. So, uh, so I, I think what you're really saying is that the money that was in your bank account was not your income.
It's not what, yes.
It was your business's revenue and deposit.
Yeah, it's expenses added. It's the utilities included.
I got you there. I got you there. Mr. Coleman, uh, does your, does your guidelines and the state guidelines, do they do, do, does there a separation between income and revenue?
No.
So the revenue would be considered income?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, sir, the only thing we're allowed to do by rule three is, when you, at this appeal process, is not retry the case, is to hear from you if you think he didn't follow, these department did not follow their rules.
Okay.
Is there a, did they not, did they follow their rules?
I don't know. When I, when I've never read their rules, I don't know if they're following their rules or not. Do you, do you get that, sir? You said there's a difference between, like, cause I go to school for business too. I know the difference between what revenue is, that's just income coming in, and then I know the difference between, uh, income. So, yes, I was showing him, this is revenue, but it's not my income. You know, only seven hundred and fifty dollars that I get paid every month.
But the government doesn't see it that way.
Well, okay.
So, so unfortunate, so it's, he's followed his rules.
Okay.
And, and so, unless you can prove that he did not follow his rules, my answer is a tie.
Oh, because I don't, I don't make that much every month. That's my only source of income at this moment, at this time, which is seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, and I have to pay utilities out of that, so that is my total income.
Did you hear what he said about utilities? Did you hear what he said about utilities?
Yeah, I heard what he said about utilities.
Then if you have your tenant using your utilities with your name on it, you're gonna be automatically disqualified. That might have happened in May. So you, your tenant's gonna have their own utilities, okay? And you can't have that much money in the bank, okay? Understand the rules and file, and play with the, file the rules.
I don't have that much money in the bank. That's why when they asked me to go get bank statements and all that, I showed them the type of money that do come into. Yeah, I understand. It was there at that time, the, it, it, they showed a deposit, but it was taken right back out.
The money was there, it was recorded, and again, the thing with utilities, I'm pretty sure I have a trustee, that, sir, I'm gonna ask you to repeat that again if that's all right. If I understand it correctly, if he's got a tenant living in his house and he's only got one set of utility bills, then he would automatically be disqualified when he claims there's only one in his household.
That's correct.
Cause he would be sharing the benefit with that. How have I been helped in the past?
He'd be lucky. He'd be lucky.
How have I been lucky? Wow, that's funny. I've been lucky, but other, other people, I guess, wow, I've been lucky.
Get, know the rules, okay?
Okay, well, I would like to, please give me a rule book so I can read that myself. I would like that rule book when you get a chance. I wanna read that myself and go over that.
I definitely would. I definitely would like to read those rules myself so I can understand it more, uh, you know. Yeah, that's not the function of this board. I'm sure they're at the library or a website.
Okay, well, that's fine. Wherever they are, I like to read it.
Sure, Mr. Uh, Coleman would be happy to give you that address, our website address.
Uh, for the record, we have given Mr. Colley a copy of our standards for two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Do you recall receiving the book?
Excuse me?
He says he gave you a book. Do you recall receiving?
I don't, I don't, I don't recall it. I wouldn't call it a book.
Okay. Information.
Yeah, the informational piece. And we've also referenced, uh, state statute as well, pointed out, uh, references the state statute to the standards that were held to.
Wouldn't it be great cause to give another copy?
No.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question too?
Sure.
I, I would like to ask this question. I see they had the miss, of the meetings and stuff here, where, you know, this is my first time ever coming to one of these meetings. Where do they get all this income to finance all of these projects in the first place? I would like to know that.
Well, like, like the income, the money the trustee gives out to people, it comes from property taxes.
I pay property taxes. I'm a property taxpayer and not only tax, I mean, I file taxes to pay taxes.
And you probably pay double taxes as your landlord, right?
Excuse me?
You probably pay double taxes, cause your property's commercial and you have your landlord.
Well, um, for the most part, I mean, taxes can fluctuate, it depends. You get what I'm saying? But still, uh, you paying property taxes, you, I mean, you putting your part in too, at the same time. So I feel like I should, I should be able to qualify for something, you know?
Mr. Colley, I'm just gonna advise you, and then we're gonna have to move on. Learn the rules, review the rules, and, um, understand this about utilities, understand the money in the bank, learn the rules, follow the rules.
Okay.
Commissioner Castellini seems to have a fair and adequate hearing this morning.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, when you have income coming in that's not yours, maybe you have another account. You put it in your business account and it's not your account, so it'd be better.
I, I didn't, I haven't done it up under any type of business, uh, any type of, I've, I've thrown everything just.
Cause if it goes into your account, it's all your account.
For my commissioners' benefit, I think it's kinda, I don't actually, I can believe the state has that rule, but like social security, if you, you're gonna, you have to income levels in social security. And, but if you have a business, if it's an expense, the revenue versus expense is two different things.
Well, e, even if you don't have a business, they still allow you to write things off, you know, as an expense, you know? They still allow you to do that when you follow your taxes and things like that. So when they say bring your past thirty day of receipts and stuff like that, I was gonna bring that just to show you. Yeah, I, I have expenses and things like that.
Commissioner Castellini, as, as God's, as noted, we've discussed, I think thoroughly gone through this matter, and following rule three, it does not appear that the trustee's office has violated the rules in any way, shape, or form. So I wish a motion to sign for the, the trustee's office.
A second.
Motion to second clause in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passed. Can you motion?
Thank you, thank you, question recessed.
Question recess is in order. All in favor?